...Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have room call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Crawford.
Here, thank you very much. Let's go on to introductions, presentations, and proclamations we have done, so that means we can move on to call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration of decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. If you'd like to speak during call to the public, please come up to the podium. Our young ladies come here right now. Give us your name, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Darrell Rock, and I have some notes just so I can stay within your three minutes, if that's okay. My family and I moved to Chino Valley several years ago to build a home and plant roots in this community. My family of six loves the idea of growing up in a small country town, and I especially love working in our local district. Two years ago, we found property that would allow us to build what would hopefully be this home and finish raising our family. We went through the proper channels, asked all the questions, and even went to the town development office to get confirmation that our land was owned and legally allowed to be split. With direct confirmation from the office, we purchased our property in October of 2018. Two years have passed. Land splits have been put on hold for almost five months, and even after getting a second confirmation in December of 2019 that there would be no issues splitting our property, we have been since given a denial letter and told that we will never be able to split our property. This has cost our family five months of crucial building time and tens of thousands of dollars. We have worked endlessly, literally exhausted all options, to try and find a way possible to make this situation work so that we can get a little bit of our home.
Wow.
Okay, sorry. I need to hear it. Just push the switch. I'm going to teach you how to speak loud. So last week, the development office presented to the planning and zoning committee amendments to section 154 regarding the square footage size of a guest home on personal property. It unanimously passed 7-0. We have been told directly by the office of development that this will be the only way that our family will be able to build our home. We are grateful and we are appreciative that we have potentially this option. We are also told that it will be on the town council agenda on the 23rd of this month. So I'm here to encourage you, as the people of Chino Valley's representative, to vote in favor of this amendment, as did the planning and zoning committee. This change will continue to support property owner personal rights. Clearly, there are major concerns regarding land splits and personal property rights. Many individuals and families are being affected, including mine and family. I urge you to be involved in that process. But in the meantime, I do want to say thank you in advance for supporting personal property rights through the approval of the amendments of section 154. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person. We look forward to seeing that on the agenda next week.
Me too.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Allen Foster. I'm a resident of Chino Valley. I've been here my whole life. I too wrote down my comments to keep it under three minutes. Being a resident here, I've seen some good changes, some bad changes, but one thing that's always been constant is it's been real transparent when you guys make changes. You guys publicize it, you put it out to the town, and the town knows what to expect when you guys are making changes. Which is great, that's how it should work. That's why we elect you guys, and you guys, it's run pretty good in my opinion, until recently. I've emailed each of you guys. I haven't gotten a response back. I did get a response from Ms. Perkins, and so I appreciate that. But I hope the rest of you guys will check your emails, and I'd love to talk to you guys about some of this. The reason I emailed you is the change in the town's policy as far as lot splits go. If you ask the staff, they'll say there hasn't been no change. It's just been a change in their interpretation, which constitutes a change. I know the town struggled with trying to solve the problem of large land splits, get split down into smaller parcels outside of the platted subdivision process. This is happening at a rapid rate, but it's happening because of the lack of the sewer and water system in our town. To alleviate this, our staff has taken it on themselves to interpret current town policy and state statutes they see fit. Although they'll tell you differently, it is in direct conflict with the other many counties in our state. I've contacted them, I work in these cities, and it runs completely different than it does in Chino Valley. That's a fact. And it's in direct conflict with how we've done things here forever, and it's changed at the drop of the hat with nothing, you know, no change to our town code, nothing presented to the town, nothing to tell the people of this town, hey, there's going to be a change, which is what we need. If we're changing the speed limit on the highway, we certainly would post and say, hey, Highway 89 is going to be, you know, 35 miles an hour, and you certainly would change the speed limit size. We haven't even changed anything in our code, which bothers my mind how we can change policy in this town without due process. I've asked tough questions of the town staff in regards to how they can change the rules without proper vetting and discussion. They've only told me that nothing has changed, it's just how they interpret, it's just now being interpreted correctly. I've asked why current town land split applications contain statements and information that conflicts with their interpretation. If you look at our own land split application, it refers to two and a half acres, anything over two and a half acres, which town, state statute says, you don't need town approval. And we've got this number here in town Chino which says four acres, but if you pull out the application, which I showed them, it says two and a half acres on there, because the old staff knew what the state statute read, and so they had their code according to it. I mean, that's, it's right there in our own paperwork. We can't even enforce what's on our paperwork. We're doing something totally different than what's on our application. The town has disenfranchised the citizens of Chino Valley, they've taken away their personal property rights, they've looked the other way at certain splits, those splits that they've approved, they've tied, they've paid a sewer hookup fee, even though they don't have sewer, they paid a sewer hookup fee. While they've turned down other ones that have the exact same scenario, an easement that they consider to be illegal. I don't know how you can differentiate between two properties and say, we're going to let this one be approved and this one not. It's odd that one can be approved, and when one's paying money for sewer hookup, that's really fishy, man. That disenfranchises all sorts of people. Mrs. Rock was way nice in pushing the increase in the guest house size, but they're ones that are affected by it. So I was their surveyor, and I represented them, and they've been adversely affected by it. It's terrible what's happening. I don't believe that this council's being given all the information that's available out there. I don't think you've been told the way those of us that go to the town are treated when we ask for a policy, where can we find this policy? It's night and day when I see staff interact with you and how they interact with us. The town needs to immediately go back to its previous incorrect interpretation of the law and allow property splits that have been put on hold since the beginning of 2020. If changes to our code need to be made, then let's do it the right way, transparent with public input, not one man's interpretation. I hope you'll take the time to meet with me like I asked, because there's a lot more that needs to be brought up and a lot of questions I have for people before we go making any new policies that are going to affect the people of this town. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We'll have an answer for you in the next council meeting.
Okay, thanks.
My name's Ryan Roberts. I'm also a resident in this town, also a surveyor in this town. I've been up here multiple times about the lot splits. It sounds like we're trying to push ideas and things that we want to change on the lot splits. None of those changes have taken place yet, but like Allen said, they're treating lot splits different this year than they did last year or even earlier this year. I've got multiple clients that got rejection letters, and, you know, last time I was up here, I asked for the culture in this town to change, you know, as far as, you know, when you go into the town, they should be there to help you. Now you just go in there, you're hit with arrogance and rudeness, and that's been the report, not just for me, but from other people. You know, last time I was told that my name, like, nothing was done to disparage my name, but my name keeps getting brought up, even by members of this council, in a disparaging way, and I don't know how that changes. My name's like brought up in my client's rejection letter, and I don't know, me being a surveyor, has anything to do with him being rejected as far as the land split, but it shouldn't be in there. So I take it kind of offensive, and it's hard to run a business and get more clients when, you know, it gives the perception that the reason their lot split is being rejected is because of the surveyor they chose, which should never be the case. So that's my biggest thing, is changing the culture in this town and the council, you know. Last meeting, nobody was allowed to be here physically, so the only way you could do a call to the public is via letter. One letter was read and the other one was not, because it was too long, is the reason given. I can only imagine if the letter was too long to read, it must have took a really long time to write, and I think it's wrong that that wasn't represented. It was that individual's only opportunity to talk to the council and to make a public statement, and it was denied. So that's what I meant by changing the culture, and the town should be there to help you and not just hit you with arrogance and restrictions. And I hope that when we come up with whatever lot split regulations, it's for the people and not just to the people. But that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anyone else that would like to speak? I think none. We'll move on to response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during calls to the public in the previous meeting. We have no response to the public. So now we'll go on to current events, summaries, and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. Do anyone on the, does anyone in the council have anything that they'd like to bring forward? Mike, you want to take a 50th anniversary or?
Yes, we had a meeting last Wednesday for the 50th anniversary. There was about a dozen of us there. It's getting closer to that date, so we're going to meet every two weeks. Our next meeting will be the 17th of June. We have committees that are doing certain things. I am looking for items to put in our time capsule. We have a number of things. We have the yearbooks from each one of the schools in town. We have the 50th anniversary book. We have a bottle of red wine from our vineyard in town. So we're collecting some items. We also have a face mask that says Corona on there, and we have an article of what coronavirus is. So we're trying to get some humor also involved in this. So 50 years, when they open this time capsule, they're going to say, what's this? So we're working on some things. You're more than welcome. It will be at the community center at 6:00 PM to 17th.
Mr. Miller?
No, Mike, it will be at the senior center. No, no. You changed it. You have to change it again.
Our next meeting location is to be determined. We'll update you on chinoaz.net.
Oh, sorry.
It's changed twice.
It's changed in the meantime, but we will update you on the Chino Town website, 50th anniversary. They'll let me know where to be.
Juan, Corey, do you have anything?
Roads and Straits Department will start meeting again in July. I talked to Frank about that, and we'll get that back on schedule.
Good. Juan?
No, sir.
Okay. Town manager?
Sure. Thank you, mayor and man, mayor and manager, mayor and council, sorry. Have a handful of items here. First off, we're right in the middle of election season, so write-in candidates for mayor or council member have until June 25th to file with the town clerk's office. As you all know, Proposition 450 for home rule is on the August 3 primary ballot. The vote will be deciding between local control or state control over the town's budget. This is a pretty critical item for the town. You can find information on it on chinoaz.net/468 for additional details. The Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters are sponsoring a virtual town council candidates forum on June 29th. There's a news flash on the town's website at chinoaz.net for more details and also on the chamber website. Stable at all of our meetings is usually Finance Director Joe Duffy, and I wanted to congratulate his family today. His son is being pinned as a sergeant for the NAU police force, and I have a couple shout-outs I want to do for departments. Jamie, could you put the picture up there of the police department? So in light of our current national climate and the unfortunate sentiment for our police department, for police departments, not ours, I'm sorry, it's heartening to know that Chino Valley PD has received an outpouring of support from our community. Besides food, they have received cards and also many verbal thank yous. It's a tough environment right now. Additionally, a young boy in our community who was uncomfortable with hosting a traditional birthday party because of COVID-19 asked for a police parade, so we had a handful of police vehicles. The sheriff's office participated, as well as the fire department. So I thank the police department for continuing to try and put a positive relationship out there with our community. I also want to commend the library, who has been engaging heavily on Facebook with COVID-19. We had just hired a new children's librarian right before COVID-19 happened, and we had to shut down the library. So over the past 90 days, they've posted 67 items to the town Facebook page and have had a total of 40,000 interactions and views on her posting. So that's over 600 eyes per post. She's been doing readings on social media with Storytime, so that's Ms. Rebecca and Stacy, and I also want to thank Matt for all their work on trying to put some stuff out there for our library. And lastly, an update on our aquatic center. They are scheduled to open this Friday. They will have capacity at 225 people, and we had asked to have some kind of food service. They have decided on vending machines. They've got two vending machines, and they'll have over 50 items there for, to select from, but everything looks to be on schedule for the aquatic center. Okay, that's it.
I'd like to thank the senior center. We had a vets group meeting this morning. We did do social distancing. We also had a packed lunch and breakfast, which were really good, so they have made it available for us to come back and meet a couple of times a month. Supervisor Brown was there, and candidate Tom was there, so it was really a good time. We're happy to see everybody back together. Okay, anybody else? Let's go on to consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Does anyone want to move, remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second. I have motioned the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting, hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pertinent to ARS 3843103A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public. No action may be taken in executive session. Item A under action items, consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution Number 2020 1167, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, state authorizing the contribution of $125,000 toward the construction costs for improvement along Road 1 North in conjunction with the construction of a new traffic signal and road widening. But I also got information here that Simpo is considering also contributing half of it, which is $62,500. So we are going to modify that, and I don't know if Supervisor Brown wants to say anything about Simpo, but Frank's going to say something. Frank?
Okay, ready? Thank you, mayor and council. This is at the request of our continuing partnering with ADOT concerning the Signal project at Road 1 North and Highway 89. As a lot of projects do, they're seeing costs increase with this project, above and beyond the major cost increases that have occurred with this project over the years. It's been one of those projects, in my personal opinion, that is just a monster. But what it goes down to is, previously, the town had contributed $75,000 or so for design. I think the county contributed about $100,000 or so, but this is technically an ADOT-led project when you look at who bids it. But they're looking at the cost, the project estimates, somewhere around 1.3. Alvin will get up here in a second and maybe have some better numbers than me. But what we're looking for is, this concerns some of the estimates to do with the 1 North portion of the project, the improvements that go into tying in Road 1 North with the signal, with the added lanes and the tapers, and the construction on the local road portion. I think the estimate's actually about 250,000. ADOT's asking for 125 of that from the town. So the recommendation from staff is that rather than reduce the scope of the project, they feel it's worth the 125,000. We also would like to modify that motion for council to also authorize and direct the town manager to seek a contribution of $62,500 from funds available to Simpo. And if that portion of the motion's approved, I'll go to the Simpo Technical Advisory Committee meeting and seek a recommendation to go to the executive board to try and acquire some funds that may be available to Simpo for this, but that is subject to the approval of the Simpo board. They've got a lot of projects to consider region-wide, but I think it's worth the ask as a staff recommendation. So with that, Alvin, you mind getting up here and maybe talking about the project a little bit?
Those of you who don't know this gentleman is Mr. Alvin Stumpf. He's a district engineer of a huge district for ADOT.
Yep. Thank you, mayor and council. Happy to be here. I kind of first wanted to just kind of go back and give a little background history on this project, because as far as signal projects goes, it's always been more on the expensive side because there is so much roadway work tied to it. It's not just installing signal poles, you know, obviously doing the approaches on Road 1 North, building a right turn lane. So going back originally, we were up close to $2 million for the whole project, and my staff working with Frank, they were able to get it brought back down to around a million. And then, you know, over the last year, we've seen construction prices go up, up to around 30 percent. So the last estimate, it did come in up around 1.25 or 1.3 million. So we, when we advertise a project, we do have to have the funding to make sure we cover our engineer's estimate. We did have conversation about, do we take out additional scope out of the project, shorten the approaches? I agree with Frank that if at all possible, it is better to keep the approaches designed like we have, because it does provide a better overall project. However, we are still looking at reducing some additional cost on some paving on the mainline highway, and the thought process is we need to do some road improvements all the way through town, maybe just hit that work when we do that work. So we can, I think there's a little opportunity for some savings, but we are still finalizing the design and estimate. Other than that, we're looking to advertise the project in August and, you know, go forward. And I'm like you guys, been looking forward to seeing this project happen for a long time, so.
Any questions?
I think where we got hung up on our, on the last meeting and why we pushed it to this one, in the recommended action, it's straightforward with the amount, and then what the split with Simpo would be fantastic. But actually, in the, in the IGA, we still have in item three, sorry, item two, paragraph three, be a 50-50 split. Are we, are we still looking? That was the problem, was the unknown because of that 50-50 split for any addition. Is that still applicable?
Yes. Yes, it's still the idea, it's a 50-50 split. Unfortunately, we, they're still that unknown till we get contractor bids, but on these types of projects, you know, our approach has been that we need to stick to a 50-50 match. When the prices came in, you know, our management said, okay, well, we'll cover our share of the extra cost, but, you know, we need to try to get the locals to kick in more. So that's where I went to Frank and said, well, do we want to reduce scope and make sure we get it under that budgeted amount, or do we want to try to, try to get the extra funding to do it ideally? But yeah, I understand there's still that uncertainty that makes people uncomfortable.
Good. Everybody else?
So until we get bids, we won't know where we're at?
Right. Right.
And Alvin, that's a pretty typical clause you have in your contract.
Yes. Yeah, and we did add in that, you know, if there's a, if the bids come in lower, that difference will get refunded, so.
Now, would we have any say-so in once, if the bid comes in at engineers' estimates, then we know we're covered with what we're approving tonight? If it comes in over engineers' estimates?
Okay.
Do you come back to us?
We would come back. You know, the other thing would be that, you know, there's language in there that if we basically decide not to move forward with the project, not award it, and, you know, that could be an option, and we could go back and reduce scope at that time and re-advertise it if, I mean, that can always be an option, but not ideal, but, you know, hope is not a strategy, but one of the things, again, talking about reducing that mainline pavement work, that should drop the cost down around 100,000, so hopefully that'll help offset any other unknown cost or higher costs that come in during bidding, so.
Well, I think with the, with Simpo actually kind of meeting us halfway on this, it would allow us a little bit of room, should that, should the bids come in slightly higher, that I would think that we would still have a little bit of extra room then because of Simpo.
Sure. Great.
This, this price is based off the design engineers' or architects' estimates, is that correct?
Yes, we have, kind of ends up with two estimates. We have our firm that did the design work, and then we have our contracts and specs folks do their own check before it actually advertises.
Statistically, are they pretty spot-on, or is there any such a thing?
Yeah, it's really, that's a tough one, the answer, because it's, as you know, the market fluctuates and, you know, sometimes we're high, sometimes we're low.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Questions? Yes, sir. Supervisor Brown?
Get this out of the way.
Mr. Simpo?
Craig Brown, chairman of the Board of Supervisors and supervisor for District Four. Mr. Mendoza is absolutely correct. In this particular IGA, I would suggest in the language, as you say, up to $125,000. That way, you're paying the difference of basically half of whatever that number may be, because none of us know what it's going to be. The other thing is, is you've got three board members from Simpo in this room at this time. That is not a quorum, however.
[laughing]
We've been pushing this project now for what, five years at least?
At least five.
And I think, you know, I think there's a very good chance that Simpo will probably go along with that extra expenditure, and I wouldn't be surprised if this actually ends up, the price that's going to be, come in from the bid, will probably be lower than this amount or spot-on, but the actual work will end up coming back, and I'll bet you you have a refund, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, conversation? Any other comments, conversation? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty eleven, one one six seven approving the I.G.A. with the state authorizes a contribution up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand towards the construction costs for the improvements along Road One North in conjunction with the construction of a new traffic signal and road widening and authorize and direct the town manager to seek a contribution of sixty-two thousand five hundred of the hundred and twenty-five thousand from funds available to Simpo.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no names. Thank you, Alvin. Appreciate you coming.
Mayor Council, can I make one comment?
We want to get this project going. It's been a long time.
Who wants to make a comment?
I just, just need to make one because you said up to the hundred and twenty-five. The, the one thing is our management's very adamant that it needs to be the fifty-fifty.
Needs to be what?
It needs to be the fifty-fifty for the two hundred and fifty thousand.
All right. I think we understand that.
Okay.
We'll wait to see what comes in and see what we can do then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to item B, consideration possible action to approve the professional service agreement with Peckham and McKinney to act as the town's executive search firm and to assist in full recruitment process for the next town manager in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Madam Human Resources Director?
Good evening, mayor and council. So this item is on the agenda because the town manager, Ms. Gritman, has provided council with a notice of retirement. It was a very generous retirement notice and it's set to take place in the first quarter of calendar year twenty twenty-one. So based upon this information and at the direction of town council, a recruitment subcommittee was formed to oversee the recruitment process and of a new town manager. The recruitment subcommittee is comprised of Mayor Croft, Vice Mayor Miller, and council member Perkins. One of their first orders of business was to recommend an executive search firm to town council to assist in this full recruitment process. So we started out by having the human resources department collect seven bids and letters of interest. We then narrowed it down to the top three choices and the recruitment subcommittee committed, um, conducted presentations or interviews and heard presentations from these top three candidates. At the conclusion of the presentation, the recruitment subcommittee reviewed, discussed, and made a motion to recommend Peckham and McKinney as the executive search firm to assist town council in selecting the next town manager. In your packet is the agreement, the scope of services, and the timeline that will be performed.
Questions? Anyone? Questions?
No, not here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the professional service agreement with Peckham and McKinney as, to act as the town executive search firm to assist in the full recruitment process for the next town manager in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
I have a motion. And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, consideration possible action to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Accountability Contract and Scope of Services with Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the amount of sixty thousand dollars for general support. Madam Town Manager?
Thank you, mayor and council. With us this evening tonight, we have the executive director, Lorette Brashir, and the board president, Rhonda Smith, plus board member Wendy McO- sorry, McManigle. And before you, you have the, like you said, the Fifth Amendment to the Accountability Contract. There is very little change in the contract, same funding amount that we've done for the last year, sixty thousand dollars. I don't know if you had any comments that you wanted to make, Lorette, or, okay. And I don't know if council has any questions. There's really no change in the scope of services.
Questions? Questions on this side? Yes, sir.
There is some changes in this contract from before.
Yeah.
It appears that there's a lot more reference to our economic development in there, which I think is great. I was happy to see that.
Right, so now that Maggie's been on here a year and they're developing a relationship, yeah, more partnership with economic development.
Good to see that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the Fifth Amendment to the Accountability Contract and Scope of Services with the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year twenty twenty-one in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for general support.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Councilman Turner, it's your turn.
I make a motion. We adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Yeah, pretty good.
That worked.
Thank you.
Hey, mayor.
Yes, sir.